Evening folks, looking to resume our regular meeting of council for September the 28th. First on item up is approval of the agenda. All those in favor, opposed, motion carried. Public participation time, this is time, folks, for anybody in the audience that might have a word or two to step up to the mic and... Marcia, I can't see if there... Is it... Oh yeah, there's a red light, I can see it now. The mic's there, folks have at it and we'll have a few minutes at the beginning of the meeting for that.
Thank you. Alan Johnston, 245 Shipstee Place. On your agenda tonight is a recommendation for speed cushions on Lagoon Road, Ocean Boulevard, and Milburn Drive. You have a petition against this recommendation and it represents the position of many people in the area. Speed cushions are not necessary because the majority of the drivers on these roads act responsibly and courteously. Lagoon Road and Ocean Boulevard are major thoroughfares and cannot be restricted by the proposed speed cushions which cause vehicles to virtually come to a stop to get over them and I know I go over them several times a week on other roads. With all the development in the Lagoon area, additional traffic will create further self-regulation. At this time, the speed cushions are a budget recommendation. This notion needs to be dismissed now when the issue is before council. There is a risk that the views of the road users will be forgotten and is arbitrarily included in the 2016 budget.
Any other members of the public?
Don Duncan, 3341 Roverlack Road. I'm against the type of selection that you've put primarily. A lot of us are at our age, were still mountain biking and riding our bikes at the time, and that particular unit that you've selected, in my opinion, is extremely dangerous for bikers or anybody that's not paying close attention to it. It necessitates coming to almost a complete stop and I think the councils, if this is what the avenue they're going in, you're going to have a few problems there with people getting hurt and I don't think that's your intention. And I agree with the previous speaker that the majority of the people are responsible and enjoy driving along there and I don't think this is the way to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Catherine Robertson, 395 Farview Road. I'm here to speak to the council and I'm curious to know how come a petition with seven or eight signatures gets put forward and even a notion when we had a petition with 240-plus signatures about the development on Painter and McChosen Road and we were disregarded. I'd like to know where the discrepancies are here, why you would take seven or eight people over 240-plus of the actual neighbors. Thank you.
Any further members of the public? Last and final call. Seeing none, we shall move ahead. Next on the agenda is Mayor's Message. There's not a whole lot. We're all returning from UBCM in Vancouver last week where we had many meetings and sessions with colleagues around the province, around what's working and not working in their communities. So, we've all got great takeaways and we'll be discussing those in times going forward. Counselor Day, you had something on orange shirt.
Thank you. I just wanted to let everybody know that September 30th is the Third Annual Orange Shirt Day, which is this little button that I'm wearing here, which is an initiative that's grown out of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission's work and specifically the work and the legacy of the St. Joseph Mission Residential School that was opened from 1891 to 1981. And this project brought together First Nations, municipal staff and politicians as well as school district and civic organizations throughout the Caribou region and they held events designed to commemorate the residential school experience, to witness and honor the healing journey of the survivors and their families, and to commit to the ongoing process of reconciliation. Chief Justice Marie Sinclair challenged all the participants to keep the reconciliation process alive and so this will be the Third Annual Orange Shirt Day to commemorate the experiences of all the residential school survivors and their families. And it's a pretty amazing story, not this year at UBCM but the year before. I was honored to be in the presence of Phyllis Webstad who told her story of her first day at residential school where she had a shiny new orange shirt that her grandmother had bought for her and it was taken away from her and she was not allowed to wear it for her first day of school. So, that's where the orange shirt comes from. And, you know, later on, she had a very telling story to tell of her experiences in school and her connections to family. And so it's important for us to remember that every child matters and that even if they are an adult, from now on, they still matter and to remember that there are many who are struggling with the legacy of the residential school. So, September 30th.
Thank you. Anyone else with anything that's come to their attention? Seeing none, we shall move ahead then from that and look for adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting of council on September 14th and I understand there are some amendments to be made on that first Counselor Day.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The minutes should be amended on page 16, section 7.3 on the second resolution for Bylaw Number 1590 to amend the resolution by adding at the end of the sentence to incorporate the amendments outlined in the staff report titled "Typographical Corrections to Omnibus Bylaw Number 1590, Miscellaneous Amendments to the Callwood Land Use Bylaw Number 151" and dated September 10th, 2015. And also on page 18 in section 8, actually that's...
It's just the bottom piece of what's in those...
So, this section is to delete what is provided in the September 14, 2014 council minutes and replace it with the following. An in-camera, in brackets, closed council meeting was held at 6:00 PM prior to the 7:00 PM regular meeting of council and all in-camera business was addressed at that time. So, my motion is that the minutes of the regular meeting of council held September 14th, 2015 be adopted as amended.
Second, Your Worship.
Yes, I have a further amendment to add, page 14, just before the bylaw section where it says the transportation master plan be adopted as amended. I did vote against that because I had an amendment that I thought was very important and that amendment did not pass, so I voted against the bylaw or the plan.
So, what are you wanting add?
Add opposed, Counselor Nalt.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't look carefully enough. I was also opposed.
With those amendments and seconded, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Looking then to receive a series of minutes, Heritage Commission on May 13th, St. John the Baptist Cemetery Board on July 15th, Emergency Planning Committee on July 21st, Planning and Land Use Committee September 1st, and Protective Services June 17th.
Move, receipt, Your Worship.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Presentations, I understand we have a short presentation from Counselor Martin in regards to highlights of the West Shore Parks and Recreation, summer highlights of 2015.
Thank you. My presentations are never short, this should be about an hour. No kidding, it's about five minutes long. It's really self-explanatory, we're going to put it up. The West Shore Park and Rec, I think it's important to council, this is going to be a presentation that's presented to all the owners, so the five municipalities plus the Leuctory District and I'll be going to all of them to present it. Probably, let's watch it first and then if council has any questions.
Put it together. We'll put it together. We'll put it together.
Sure.
Put it together. We'll put it together.
So, I think it's important, sometimes you don't realize how many people we actually touch and so I just thought it's important that all the owners sort of recognize that, you know, we're making a big difference and West Shore Park and Rec is a huge part of our community.
Counselor Day?
Just wanted to say, that's awesome and I went for a walk through Royal Bay on Saturday to hear the sounds of the first soccer game that I'd heard played on the turf field there. So, well done.
And just one other point that I'm very proud of, the fact, and you saw it in one clip, that the V-Lox Rugby has moved from the University of Victoria to the West Shore and they have actually changed their name now to the West Shore Rugby Club and that they will be running programs for both men, women, boys, and girls. So, they actually already have four junior clubs running already in the West Shore and obviously they're hoping to capture some of the guys from Team Canada. So, very, very excited that they're rebranding themselves to the West Shore Rugby. As well as giving us $450,000.
All right, thanks very much on that presentation. Correspondents requiring counsel direction, 6.1, letter from the CRD, September 10th regarding the Fairness, Transparency Advisory Scope and Application. CAO?
You'll recall that this particular matter was, excuse me, discussed at the last regular council meeting. There was correspondence from the CRD asking for council's input and advice or position with respect to the terms of reference and the scope for the CRD's Fairness and Transparency Advisor related to the sewer treatment project. And council, based on some preliminary comments from myself, council passed a motion essentially indicating that the city would have no concerns if the mandate and scope of the Fairness and Transparency Advisor, if her role encompassed not only a review of CRD's processes with respect to the sewer project but also with respect to all municipal processes in regards to the project. For example, how the municipality may rezone a site or select a particular site. There was a motion that was passed by council, it has not been communicated to the CRD at this point in time and subsequent, and the referral just came in very, very late and the CRD in typical fashion asked for a very quick turnaround time. The CAOs have subsequently met on a couple of occasions to further consider this particular matter and we respectfully suggest that council, and we're presenting consistent advice to each of our councils on the West Shore, we're respectfully suggesting that council may wish to reconsider that motion essentially to indicate that in our opinion, the Fairness and Transparency Advisor's scope should be limited to the review of CRD processes only and not member municipality processes. And our reasons for this, and we're presenting a report with the same recommendation tomorrow to the West Side Select Committee, there's essentially three reasons for our recommendation. We feel that the broad mandate that the CRD has outlined for the Fairness and Transparency Advisor duplicates a number of legislated processes that are already in place to deal with citizens' concerns at the municipal level and, for example, the Office of the Ombudsman, the Privacy Commissioner, the Inspector of Municipalities, and the Auditor General for Local Government. Our second reason is that we've identified some concerns that this added role has the potential to become overwhelmed with issues better dealt with at the municipal level and may jeopardize the municipality's ability to meet tight timelines and complete the project. And our third reason is that we also noted possible issues in the scope of the Fairness and Transparency Advisor, some potential issues and conflict as it pertains to processes and decisions initiated by the First Nations, particularly the Songhees and the Asquemalt First Nations. So, we think there's a jurisdictional issue there. We fully are not, we're not taking issue with the Office of the Fairness and Transparency Advisor, I think it's a real good concept and we're fully committed to the principles articulated in the terms of reference that have been set out by the CRD. But the CRD specifically asked for municipalities' position on this issue of whether the focus and the role of the Fairness and Transparency Advisor should also be related to municipal processes, past and present. So, we're suggesting that for the reasons that I've just set out, that we basically rescind that motion and that we communicate to the CRD that it's our position, Callwood's position, and this is consistent with certainly the position that I know is being recommended to Asquemalt and to View Royal, that the scope and application of the role of the Fairness and Transparency Advisor be limited to the review of CRD processes only and not member municipality processes and that the review should only be for complaints regarding the ongoing process and not past decisions.
Counsel?
Yes, on a point of order, staff is asking us to reconsider this but I believe under the community charter, only the mayor can ask us to reconsider a matter. Is this action by the mayor or is it an action by staff?
No, action by me to reconsider based on information that we had discussed further after.
Thank you, that clarifies it.
Counselor Day?
So, we would need to rescind the previous motion?
Yes.
So, I'd move that we rescind the motion from September 14th?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried? And the motion would be as...
As recommended. So, I would so move and it was an area that was very gray at the time, we'd had very little discussion on it, so I think that the likelihood is more that it would be bogging down the Office of the Fairness and Transparency Advisor as well. So, I think that does provide better clarity.
I'll second it, Your Worship.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Item number 6.2, Core Area Waste Water Treatment Program Project Charter for the Options Phase Referral to Municipal Staff, again led by Mr. Nathan.
Madam Chair.
Your Worship, this is also another item which is on the agenda for the West Side Select Committee meeting tomorrow and the CRD has forwarded this particular document for comment by the West Side Select Committee and by the technical staff and by the CAOs but has not specifically asked for council's input or comments on the project charter. We find that a little bit somewhat concerning and certainly the CAOs have discussed this issue as well in the past two weeks. This is a referral that we only received this week and they're asking for CAO's comments by today and the item is on the West Side Select Committee tomorrow. I felt it important, as did my colleagues, to bring this forward for at least council's information. You're not being specifically asked by the CRD to comment on it but we've reviewed it and I have several comments. On this particular document, you know, it's a project charter document, I guess I'm less concerned in regards to the wording and the scope of this particular document because I think it basically sort of sets out some of the key principal players and what the overall objectives of the project are. But it is what it is and they've asked for our comments and I know, I've talked to my colleagues about this and we have several and if you want, I can take just probably no more than a minute and a half to outline my comments. I know View Royal has already made some comments and Asquemalt's dealing with the issue tonight. And if council generally endorses these comments, then I'm certainly prepared and I think the CAOs are prepared to present those to the West Side Select Committee tomorrow. If you may wish to refer to your document, I'm not entirely sure that if I quote page numbers here, that they're going to coincide with the page numbers on the iPad but I just have a few comments to make on it. Yeah, where is it there? If you turn to page...
Perhaps reading what's at the top of whatever page will maybe better allow us to jump.
Under the background section, section 2.
So, page 3 of 11 on our iPads?
If you turn to the background section, page 2, it's in the fourth paragraph down.
Sorry, Gary, I'm on paper, so can you give me page?
That's page 81.
Thank you.
The fourth paragraph down where it says, "In June 2014, the plan to build one regional plant at McLoughlin Point was put on hold by the CRD Board in response to public input from the residents of Asquemalt, the host municipality." We'd submit that there's a bit of lack, there's some clarification that's required in regards to the status of McLoughlin. I know that there's, there have been some expressions that the project is dead but that's not, you know, this issue of being put on hold, what exactly does that mean? So, that's our first comment. Still under the background section, the paragraph second from the bottom that reads, "In July 2015, both select committees presented their work and recommendations." This paragraph refers to the East Side Select Committee as actually presenting, after that phase one process, potential sites for consideration. That's true, the East That's true, the East Side did present potential sites for further study, but if you read in the paragraph, it refers to the West Side Select Committee only detailing its work to date and accepting, and wanting to do further public engagement and more detailed costing and engineering. I think it should be noted that the West Side Select Committee did present some higher, I wouldn't say shortlisted, but they did, they did present some higher priority potential sites and scenarios, and that is not referenced in this document. It just reads that, you know, we've, we basically did some public engagement, and now we're doing more detailed costing and engineering. On page, eight of the document...
Top of the page reads?
And this would be page 86 of the paper agenda. This is page eight of the document, under the section Roles and Responsibilities. It refers to the Fairness and Transparency Advisor, and we do feel that there should be some reference in here or some acknowledgement that certainly the, and this kind of goes to my previous point over the Fairness and Transparency Advisor, that there's clearly a significant role of the Office of the Ombuds Person in this particular process, which the document's silent on. Again, it'll be up to the CRD whether they wish to make any of these changes. On page nine of the document, where, and this is page 87 of the paper, under the section Core Area CAOs and First Nations Administrators, it just basically makes reference to the Core Area CAOs and First Nations Administrators as receiving project-specific information and updates from the CRD's General Manager of Parks and Environmental Services. Well, we'd submit that we're the principal policy advisors to the West Side Select Committee, and I think that that's a little light in terms of our respective role. This is maybe a bit of a turf issue, but, you know, I just don't think it acknowledges, you know, we're certainly more than just receiving information and updates. And the final point I would make is on page 10 of the document. This is page 88 of the paper package, under Milestones. I think it should be noted, and I believe the CRD is certainly aware of this, and it's their intention, but the overall project timeline is quite out of date at this point in time, and it doesn't really reflect the current situation as we're working to, so it certainly needs to be updated. And in the last line there, the last sentence, it says, "The scheduling and implementation of the public consultation on the preferred solution sets after the costing analysis is anticipated to occur in early December but remains to be determined." We've certainly been given every indication by parties in the CRD that, in fact, the public, the West Side and East Side are to present recommendations to the Core Liquid Waste Management Committee by the end of October, and that the processes then will come together, and that November is the month for public consultation, a blended process, East Side, West Side, public consultation in November, not anticipated to occur in early December but remains to be determined. Your Worship, those are my comments. Again...
I'm not looking for a council motion?
I'm not looking for a council motion at this point in time, but we have been asked to provide comment. If we're given the opportunity tomorrow, we'll articulate these at the Select Committee.
So perhaps receive for information?
So moved.
Second. Any comments, questions? Counselor Malt?
Yes, it's, I'm sorry that we only received this document after 4:00 PM on Thursday to study it. There's a whole bunch of stuff I would like to look at in much more detail. I will just jump back to one on page three on the background, the very first paragraph. "Environmental Report Commissioned by the Ministry of Environment Noted the Contamination of Seabed Sites Close to Outfalls, the CRD Outfalls. As a result, the province mandated that the CRD plan for and initiate secondary sewage treatment for that region." As I recall, and I didn't have time to go back and look at the reports, the contamination referred to, one, was not at the point where the scientific advisors said sewage treatment was necessary. Two, was mainly concerned with heavy metal contamination, which the proposed sewage treatment by the CRD would not fix, as they are proposing only secondary treatment, and it would be tertiary treatment that would take out heavy metals. I would like to see a little bit more clarification around that background.
Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Worship. A couple of questions purely out of interest, Mr. CAO. I'm assuming we received this document already edited? We didn't make the edits that are on our paper?
Yeah, the edits are a result of further input from CRD staff as well as the East Side Select Committee. The East Side has seen this, and they've made comments, and I think the redlining that you're seeing is primarily from CRD staff and the East Side Select Committee. West Side is being given its opportunity tomorrow.
Got it, thank you. And do you know how old the original document was before edits? It's not that old.
No.
The reason why I say, I just happen to notice that the budget jumped $200,000, just like that, which, you know, kind of amazed me. It was a recent, fairly recent document, and I knew that would get Andrea's attention.
I think it was September 2nd, the first iteration of this, but again, this is the first referral that they've sent to us.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Motion to receive? All good then, folks? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Item 6.3, Vancouverland Building Trades Asbestos Awareness and Registries. Phil? Do you want to come and speak to this letter that's there or make yourself available for questions? It is just a, or is there anything more specific that you're looking for?
I guess probably I wasn't all that clear in terms of the municipal ask. I think within the body of the letter, you can clearly see that I'm asking for a ban from the federal government, likely a, an educational, worker educational program in terms of the provincial government through their ITA. For, in terms of the municipal ask, what I'm, what we're seeking is, I'm going to say, an endorsement of the letter. We think that we're standing on some real moral high ground in terms of the health risks, the liability, and other risks to all government and workers and just people within the communities. We work, I have an office just down from Belmont High School, which is about to be torn down, which we all well know, it contains asbestos, and we want to make sure that that's done properly so the community isn't at risk, as we see young people walking back and forth up and down Jaclyn, day in and day out. So in terms of the municipal ask, we're not, so besides the endorsement, we're actually also asking you to participate in the Buildings Registry Program as well. And I want to be clear that we're not asking you to do something that you don't already likely do in terms of looking at your infrastructure, your buildings, your, you know, the real estate that the municipality owns, and include the mechanical, you know, the trucks, the vehicles, et cetera. What we're asking you to do is, within that routine assessment and investigation, that you probe to ensure that you identify asbestos building products, because, hey, they're in the walls, they're in the ceilings, they're in the floors. In most buildings that was, that were built from 1900 to 1970, every community has those buildings in it. And we want to ensure that the public safety, the worker's safety, and the community's safety all at the same time. And so we're asking you to include that further look in your infrastructure assessment, and then treat that properly. It isn't an issue of the past. Asbestos is still being brought into Canada, and it can be brought in without any restrictions. It could be a McDonald's chew toy containing 99% of the asbestos, and our kids could be gnawing on it, and they'll ingest it, and they'll end up with intestinal cancers. So there is no restriction on bringing asbestos products into Canada today. Your municipal yard could be outfitting your brakes with brake pads that are coming in from out of country containing asbestos. So that's our issue today, is still being brought into Canada from other countries that are, that are manufacturing with it. The awareness program is all of that. It's to highlight and understand the risk that we're putting our community people and our young workers now as well, because the young workers that are entering the work site now are not aware of this. I come from an age that Wishart was dirt road when I first moved here, that, and started in the shipyard after graduating from Dunsborough High School. I watched it, I couldn't see between you and I and some of the ships that we worked because it was a complete whiteout of asbestos in the air. I watched our coworkers struggle with the health effects. We came to understand what those were early on, and then I watched them get sick and die. So we want to protect the young workers that are coming in the workforce as well. Again, we think they're coming from a high moral ground, and it makes good financial sense as well in the long run. That's the ask. Thank you.
And I'm just wondering, Counsel, if it might be something that we want to send to committee and look to have discussion on further with the potential of bringing a resolution to AVICC?
May, Madam Mayor? I would like to have staff's input as well. We have considerable knowledge from our Building Department.
Motion perhaps to receive and?
So move that we receive the letter and forward to staff for further information?
Second. Any further questions, comments? Counselor Malt?
Yeah, just it seems to me that quite a bit of this already is done by people like WorkSafe BC, Building Code, Building Inspection Code, et cetera, so I would like to see further expert comment on it before we run full speed ahead and make recommendations that are already being done by another agency.
Any further comment? Called question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Thank you, Phil, for your few moments there to explain. Did anybody have any questions of Phil at all? We're good? Okay. 6.4, Letter from City of Hamilton Request for Financial Support and Appeal for Municipalities to Have Authority to Reasonably Regulate the Location of Mailboxes. It's fairly explanatory, city, or City of Hamilton, Ontario, nothing to do with me. Did take on Canada Post and lost the challenge around the bringing of the community mailboxes to the community, and they are seeking an appeal in this regard and looking to have fellow municipalities support this. I know that FCM is where the municipalities usually go to when it's outside of our own boundaries, and I just want to know from Counsel, what do you want done with the letter? Counselor Day?
Thank you. I just want to note that they weren't trying to stop Canada Post from putting in super mailboxes, but they did want to regulate their locations, and I think that is something that is quite important in our community, especially given our mountainous terrain and sometimes narrow roadways. It may be more difficult at times to determine where is a safe location for a mailbox, and certainly there have been some concerns here. It's nice that Hamilton is doing the heavy lifting in terms of asserting a municipality's right to determine how their roadways are being used, and FCM has sought intervenor status and is not questioning Canada Post's policy decision, but is supporting municipalities' rights and duties to manage the road allowance for the benefit of all users. So I think that it's quite often the one that goes first who pays the price. It would be nice to do something to support Hamilton in supporting our ability to regulate our roadways.
Stopping there or adding something? Counselor Martin?
Thank you. I won't, if, if, I think it's wonderful if we could, but I'm not interested in us putting financial contribution towards this. Canada Post is a federal jurisdiction, it will stay a federal jurisdiction, and we will not get, we will not win. I mean, simple as that. So it's just, I think it's money wasted personally, so I won't be supporting it.
I would just note that Canada Post is not federal government, it is a crown corporation. It is a for-profit entity.
It's under federal legislation.
It is under federal legislation, but it is supposedly independent crown corporation. So I'll just sort it out there to, that I would move that we support them with $1,000.
Seconder? No motion? Motion to receive?
Move receive.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Item 7.1, Planning Land Use Rezoning Application for 1939 and 1945 Suk Road?
Thank you, Worship. With this application, the applicant is requesting a site-specific zoning text amendment for the properties at 1939 and 1945 Suk Road in order to add boarding school to the list of permitted uses in the community commercial or CT zone of the Land Use Bylaw Number 151. The applicant is also requesting a variance to relax the maximum allowable building height pursuant to Section 7.2.04 of the Land Use Bylaw from three stories to 10 stories in order to facilitate the construction of a boarding school at the subject properties. The committee received a brief presentation, including information about the founders of the Dwight School of Canada, and some background information on one of their schools that's currently located at Chonagun Lake. The applicant informed committee that this project will consist of approximately 30,000 square feet of classroom and assembly space and 30,000 square feet of dorm room facilities. It was also stated that it would be designated with energy efficiency in mind, and that there would be a high emphasis on maintaining a campus feel by focusing on the walkability of the site, as well as the applicant has informed committee that they are currently in negotiations on a long-term lease agreement with the West Shore Parks and Recreation Society to accommodate the needs of the school during the rec centers off-peak times. Should confirmation that the boarding school will be in allowable use, the applicant will undertake the efforts to begin the full design, and it was noted that the project will create approximately 75 high-paying, full-time jobs, which will have a significant economic spinoff, and will also create 400-person assembly hall available to the public when not in use by the school. We had a fair amount of discussion on various subjects such as, what about sewer units? What about access and egress? And... What about access and egress and taxes and that sort of thing? And many of those subjects will be addressed at another time in the process. This was specifically to deal with the land use aspect. However, it was noted that on the tax side, although that currently we're under the impression that they might be exempt from taxes, the representative of the Dwight School informed the committee that discussions have been taking place with the owner, and they're in fact offering to make a payment in lieu of taxes, and this should be taken into consideration. After further discussion, the committee actually made a unanimous recommendation to counsel, and I will so move items one, two, and three in the recommendation. They're fairly lengthy, so I won't read them all, your worship.
Thank you.
I think you should read them all.
Seconder, please?
Second.
Discussion, counsel? Counselor Knoll?
Thank you. I too attended the meeting, and first off, I will say this is an incredible improvement over what was proposed for that site last. I believe it was something like a twenty-five-story building, which would have overshadowed everything in the neighborhood and been built very close to the creek. I'm not too concerned about the traffic, as this will peak at grade twelve, and I guess most of the students will be probably dropped off by their parents. They won't be driving their own cars. What I am concerned with is the fact that schools are exempt from paying property taxes. There are a number of cases before the court right now testing how much of a school and which parts of the school are exempt. I think the last case was basically everything is exempt, including playing fields. Since counsel is also considering tonight giving a hotel a ten-year tax exemption, which is going to cost the taxpayers of the city about a million dollars in income, I would really like some of these questions about taxes answered before we change the land use. So I will be supporting this to go forward, but unless I get adequate answers and adequate assurances that some form of property taxes or grants in lieu of taxes will be paid, I will not support the final reading of this. I would like to remind counsel and the public of what happened when we made Royal Rhodes from a military college, which paid for payments in lieu of taxes, to a private college, which promised us payment in lieu of taxes in perpetuity. Perpetuity turned out to be five years. At the end of five years, Colwood got a drastically reduced tax from Royal Rhodes, in turn of which we still had to provide services. So I think this is of great importance for this project as far as public support and certainly as far as my support goes, so I look forward to seeing some constructive way of answering those.
Counselor Day?
Thank you. I will be supporting this initiative at this point in time, but I am looking to see how we will pay for the services that the site will inevitably require, especially including traffic. That is a very dangerous location. There's no easy way to solve the traffic issues. You either have to build a bridge over the creek and exit at Colwood Crescent, or you have to come out across the Galloping Goose Trail to come out at Aldine Avenue, or you're stuck with the driveway that currently exists that has previously had some significant issues. And some major changes were made to the road as a result of a fatal car accident there about eighteen years ago. So it's not that I'm not supportive of the use. I think it's a wonderful idea, but I need to know for the citizens of Colwood how we will support that infrastructure appropriately. So I am supportive of the idea. I need some more hard details.
Counselor Logan?
Thank you, worship. One of the things that really is intriguing about this application is how it supports, you know, you take the tax side away from the equation, but how this type of project supports what's located and what will be locating in the Colwood corner area. So, and I'll remind counsel that had we not offered that tax exemption for the hotel, that hotel would not have been built. So it's an investment. So I know counsel in ten years down the road will be thinking, thank goodness they gave that tax exemption, because now we've got a windfall and we've got a hotel. So this project will feed into that hotel. It'll feed into local businesses. But also, as an owner of West Shore Parks and Rec, we stand to gain a significant benefit by utilizing that property when it would have otherwise been down and underutilized. So from that aspect alone, I think, you know, it's a win-win. The other aspect, too, is it's kind of on the outskirts of the city center, if you will, close to another educational institution. So that in itself lends itself to the perfect location, quite frankly. I know there's some discussion, too, about height, and there's a desire, at least on the committee's part, to look at the ten-story versus a couple of shorter buildings, just in terms of maintaining green space and that sort of stuff. So that's kind of what the committee found intriguing of this application. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Thank you. Quick question to our director of planning. You with me? What's the property zoned for right now? What could theoretically be built there? Could a twenty-five-story building be put there?
Under existing zoning, a range of commercial uses could be built there. Existing maximum height in the zoning, I believe it's C2, is three stories.
All right. Thank you. I'm totally supportive of this. I think it makes good economic sense. I think you're going to be bringing in families hopefully will want to live close to the school, which will also add to the economic benefits to the community. And I think it's a wonderful use for that piece of property, so I'll be supporting it.
Anyone else? And I will say that I think conversations have already been started in our finance department in regards to what the impact this will have and may mean on things, so we can look forward to that already. Call the question, then. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Next item is seven point one point two, report planning technician discharge of restricted covenant on EE four seven five three three.
Thank you, worship. The staff report before you outlines a recommendation to discharge a historic section two nineteen covenant registered against the titles of twenty residential properties located on Hyde Drive, Orchoplace, and Tenue Place. The covenant in question was registered as a condition of rezoning in nineteen ninety-one, and the associated subdivision was subsequently built out. Therefore, the covenant is no longer necessary. And as stated in the staff report, the issue was brought to staff's attention by the Garth Homer Society, which is in the process of purchasing one of the affected properties for the purposes of maintaining a group home, a use that is permitted in zoning, but not encompassed in the uses specified in Schedule C of the restrictive covenant, which simply lists single-family residential as permitted uses. Therefore, the recommendation is being tabled before counsel to seek a resolution authorizing the mayor and the chief administrative officer to sign the appropriate documents to discharge restrictive covenant EE four seven five three three from all affected properties. Thank you.
Recommendation?
I'll move the recommendation.
Seconder? Discussion? Counselor Martin?
Sorry, I didn't really understand it from a standpoint of looking at the seconds under the summary when you were talking about that, or excuse me, the first paragraph, when you said that it should have been discharged after nineteen, in the nineteen nineties and just wasn't? Is that, sorry, I'm just, I'm confused on why we're discharging it now, other than that there's that need? Like, why wasn't it discharged before?
Through the chair, I can't say why it wasn't discharged. It likely didn't come up as something that people were aware of as needing to happen. But in the text of the covenant itself, it says it's to be discharged when the subdivision's approved, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Knoll?
Yes, the covenant also required the properties to provide a certain number of services while being constructed. I just wanted to confirm that all of those services have been provided to the city's satisfaction?
The planning department circulated the covenant to the various departments that are affected, and as stated in the report, including the approving officer, that there was no objections to it being removed because of all conditions being met.
Seeing no more questions, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Next item up is seven point one point three, memo again for nineteen thirty-nine and nineteen forty-five Suk Road zoning text amendment bylaw coordination.
Sorry, thank you, worship. The memorandum in item seven point one point three is presented before you to highlight the fact that staff have placed a draft bylaw on tonight's agenda concerning a rezoning application number RZ fifteen dash zero zero six, which would see boarding school added as a permitted use in the C2 zone on the properties located at nineteen thirty-nine and nineteen forty-five Suk Road. Staff have done this to offer counsel the opportunity to give first and second reading to the said bylaw directly after considering the associated recommendation of the Planning Land Use Committee contained in item seven point one point one of tonight's agenda. Thank you.
So is there, I was going to say move receipt?
Second.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? And then moving into seven point two, transportation and public infrastructure, request for traffic calming on Lagoon Road. Counselor Knoll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Committee reviewed a request for traffic calming on Lagoon Road. The city was in receipt of a petition bearing seven names asking for specific, specifically putting speed cushions in place. A little bit of debate ensued. Committee came up with the recommendation that counsel consider in the 2016 process the installation of approximately eight emergency vehicle-friendly speed cushion and warning signs, two on Lagoon Road and/or two on Melbourne and/or four on Ocean Boulevard. That was what committee brought forward as a recommendation. In the interim, we have received another petition with, I think there's about thirty-four names on it, opposing speed cushions. Seventeen of those names are actually from Colwood. They come from as far as Machosen and Victoria. But the fact that there's seventeen opposed to this over a petition that had seven that were for it leads me to think that we should reconsider that recommendation, and I'm not sure what the process is. I don't want to move a motion that I do not any longer support.
Does counsel want to have a bit of a discussion on this ahead of time, or look for a motion to refer back to committee for further discussion and options?
I would move it that we refer it back to committee.
Any discussion on that? Counselor Knoll?
Yes, I would like to see more discussion of alternate ways of calming the traffic. I do note quite a number of people far in excess of the forty-kilometer-an-hour speed limit both on Lagoon and Ocean Boulevards at almost any time of the day, so I would like to see alternative methods proposed. It could be as simple as having speed traps out there on a regular basis, but I do agree with the seven that speeding is a problem on occasion, and I do agree with the other petition that speed humps are a real nuisance. So I'd like to see the committee come up with a more constructive speed calming effort.
And I'm just wondering if, you know, it depends on what area of the hill you're at as to whether you're for or against. Counselor Chung?
Thank you. And I just wanted to reiterate that why I was particularly interested in the speed cushions that you can bolt down is to kind of test it, to see if it would work. And if it didn't work, you have the option to remove it and put it in a different area that would work. And so it's not a wasted method. And so that's saying that I acknowledge that there is speeding there and that we perhaps need to do something about it, but also that we do have a lot of options.
Counselor Day?
Thank you. I've just been noticing lately that speeding is just an issue in every part of our community. I mean, it's very hard to keep to sixty kilometers per hour on Suk Road. And as I was walking on the weekend, watching traffic coming down Machosen Road down into the gravel pit, you know, it's clearly driving very quickly down that hill. And it's just, you know, it's something that I think every community grapples with, and areas that have been most successful seem to have been areas like in View Royal, where there's a number of traffic calming islands and stormwater treatment gardens that have been put in, a number of pedestrian crossing treatments that have been added. And those aren't quick fix, you know, items. It takes a real concerted planning effort to bring speeds down and get people used to driving at a, I'm just like everybody else. I'm used to driving too fast on Suk Road. So I look down sometimes as I'm going by someone and think, I really don't need to be going this fast. It's just hard to slow down when everyone else is going that fast. So it's a cultural change and a cultural shift that is needed. So I support us finding other methods, and I agree that sometimes the risk is so great that even speed humps are better than not doing anything at all.
Did you have...
Yeah, I just, thank you, worship. You know, perhaps one size doesn't fit all, for sure. I will say that we've had the speed cushions installed in my neighborhood and on Sunridge Valley Drive, in fact, one right outside my house. And they have been wildly effective, I do have to say. However, in that respect, it was purely a resident-driven initiative, and the residents in the neighborhood on a number of the streets that surrounded Callwood Creek Park were the ones that pushed heavily for the city to install these. And Counselor Chung is right on the money in that these things are something that can be easily moved, depending on what works or what doesn't work. And they're relatively easy to install, as opposed to putting in the asphalt speed humps, and they're also compatible with the emergency vehicles as well. So again, they may not be the best choice for the lagoon, but, you know, perhaps another option is needed. Thank you.
Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed?
Sorry. Can I just get clarification on what the motion exactly is?
Refer.
It's referring back to the committee?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Next item is proposal for transit shelter agreement, item seven point two point two.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Committee reviewed a report from staff that the multi-year agreement with Patterson Outdoor Advertising for the supply of transit shelter, transit shelters with advertising expired on August fifth, 2015. We were looking to find somebody else to provide this service, went out for proposals. Only one proposal that covered transit shelters was received, and again, that was from Patterson Outdoor Advertising. The deal on this is they provide the shelters, brand-new shelters. They put advertising on the shelters, and the city receives in turn some revenue for those shelters. So we get free shelters and revenue as well. Patterson being the only... we get free shelters and revenue as well. Patterson being the only company to propose, committee recommended, and I would move that the chief administrative officer be authorized to enter into a new fifteen-year agreement with Patterson Outdoor Advertising for the supply, installation, and maintenance of transit shelters with advertising, with an option to extend the agreement for a further five-year period. And staff look into the feasibility of having additions to bus shelters such as USB ports, solar panels, and electronic messaging boards for bus routes.
Second. Any discussion? Counsel Day? And then Martin?
I just want to support the second part of the motion, looking at the feasibility of adding on, even if it's as simple as some solar-powered lighting that, you know, glows after dark. We need to make transit more attractive and more fun to participate in. And so I think having, you know, possibly, you know, a USB port to plug in your phone or other device, or an option to have some lighted signage to give you some idea what buses are coming and when maybe the next one is due. Those are all things that would greatly benefit the appeal of transit.
Counsel Martin?
Thank you. Just one question, either to Counsel Nolte or to staff. Do we have control over what is advertised? I know, for example, with West Shore Park and Rec, we're able to control that there's no liquor advertisement or cigarette advertisement or anything along those lines. Do we have that built into our contract?
I do not have the answer. I will refer that to staff. Is anybody familiar with the contract?
Yeah, I'm pretty certain we don't have any control, other than we could, you know, discuss with them ending the contract if we're really outraged.
I'm just, and the only reason I bring it up is, I'm just wondering if we can, like, is the contract already done? Like, are we, do we have the ability to put it in a moral clause, just around that it meets the morals of the, of the community?
The contract is still open for discussion, but I would just wonder who would be the judge on the morality of anything.
Well, I mean, I definitely can provide you the wording of West Shore Park and Rec. Yeah, I know it wouldn't be. We couldn't leave it with any of this. No, I'm kidding. No, it's just, I mean, I guess I just don't want, you know, as I said, I just don't want to see liquor ads or cannabis ads if that starts to become, or that kind of thing, that, you know, if it's seen as public, that we have some sort of say on that. And I can easily provide the wording from what we use in our contracts. So like with the Q Center. So just to get around that, so we're able to control that. That would be my one recommendation.
Counsel Day.
I don't think that's a bad idea, but in all my time looking at our bus shelters, I don't think I've ever seen the liquor ad on the bus shelters. So that may be something they're already doing. Just noticed one today, and, you know, it was Jack FM that was advertising on there. So.
Well, sorry. I mean, we had this problem at the Q Center because we have an e-cigarette ad that got put up, and we're fighting with, actually, we're fighting with the Shamrocks right now, telling them they have to take it down because they are not allowed to advertise that type of thing in a recreational facility.
Perhaps maybe you could provide that to the CAO or engineering just on and have considered in the.
And we could, we could see if Patterson have any records or any policy themselves on what they do advertise and communicate that back to you.
Thank you, Worship. I too will be supporting this, and I appreciate staff putting in that little reminder about the creative outdoor advertising that supply our current benches. So, because that's always been on the back of my mind. So after this is dealt with, I have a secondary motion as a result.
Anybody else on this first motion that we have? Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? And you had something subsequent? Counsel Logan?
Yes, you worship. I would move that the city give notice to terminate the agreement with creative outdoor advertising, and that staff bring options of providing benches to the Transportation and Public Infrastructure Committee.
Second. Discussion? Counsel Logan?
Thank you, Worship. These benches were, well, not something that I, I don't think I've ever agreed with. But they are not particularly aesthetically pleasing, or nice to sit on, functional. They, they move, they're on a tacky mat, they're just, they're not something that represents the municipality very well, I guess is what I'm saying. So we can do better. Considering it's only a year-to-year contract, I think it's probably a good time that we.
Took a look at it.
Take a look at it, yeah.
I know, my experience on them has been that they retain water in the groove, so a lot of times people won't even use them. So therefore, what's the purpose?
Funny you said I had a question. Sorry, with that, I don't know that contract at all. Is that a contract that's current, or is that something we are allowed to terminate? Is there a financial cost for terminating that? I don't know any of that type of question.
It is current right now. I think the expiry date was given in the report, if I remember rightly.
It is in the report.
So I guess, my question, I guess I'm asking is, is this an early termination? And do we have, is there an early termination penalty if we're terminating it early?
Actually, termination less than twelve months. So we'd be bringing a report back to committee fairly soon to start discussing.
Okay.
Do we want to carry it on?
But, sorry, but what is Counsel Logan's motion right now?
To terminate it or to renew?
It's that we give notice, and I'm flexible on the wording, Michael, but the motion is that we give notice to terminate the agreement with outdoor, creative outdoor advertising, and that staff bring options of providing benches to the Transportation and Public Infrastructure Committee.
Yeah, and I'll put that on the fast track.
Just, for everyone's information, it does say in the report that it's a year-to-year contract, and it just rolls over unless the city cancels that agreement. So I, it doesn't say what the date is for that, but we should be able to move forward reasonably quickly.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Pedestrian bridge culvert inspections, item seven point two point three. Again, Counsel Nolte?
Yes, Callwood engaged the services of an engineering consultant this year to do detailed inspections of pedestrian bridges and large culverts for assets management of our infrastructure. This report provides a summary of the results of the inspections and recommended repairs for maintenance and safety purposes, along with estimated costs. Committee reviewed the report and moved a fairly lengthy two-part recommendation regarding the bringing forward to budgeting various amounts for the bridges and culverts over the next few years. And the second part of the motion was we actually spent less on re-repairing the Esquimalt Lagoon Bridge this year than had been anticipated. And the recommendation was we spend the monies left over in this year's budget from Esquimalt Lagoon on repairs to some of the bridges prioritized in the maintenance list. So I would move the recommendation in your agenda.
Second.
Discussion? Counsel Day?
I just want to add that this has been a long, long process of evaluating our bridges and culverts in Callwood, starting with some really longstanding issues with culverts, probably twenty years ago now, and ending with, you know, reaching the point now where we're evaluating bridges that have been built as part of our Park Central structures over the years. And I think it's very good proactive management of city assets.
And I note this is for discussion in our 2016 and forward budget. So we'll see more of this coming up. Counsel Martin?
To staff, where does this fit in with our dams? Are they just completely separate? It wasn't, it wasn't evaluated. I'm sorry, I missed the last TPI meeting. So was this not part of that? It just seemed like it sort of fits, you know, the dams, bridges, culverts.
Yeah, the thing is, you need very different skills to navigate a dam and a bridge. The best engineers in the world are usually dam engineers, and probably the second best are the bridge engineers. But it takes a lot of experience to do dams, and so it's a separate track.
So it just wasn't included?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted the clarification. Thank you.
All good? Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Moving folks into Section Eight, Bylaws, eight point one, bylaw number one five nine six, final reading, revitalization, tax exemption, bylaw number one four nine eight, two thousand and thirteen, hotels amendment, bylaw number one.
Move final reading, your worship?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Eight point two, bylaw number, you have, yeah, that'll be you. You have something on that one?
He was just opposing.
Yeah.
Opposing on that one? Okay. Bylaw number one five nine seven, first and second readings only on Callwood Land Use bylaw, number one five one, nineteen eighty-nine, amendment number one four eight, CT Zoom, C2 Zone, nineteen thirty-nine and nineteen forty-five Suk Road.
Move introduction?
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
Move second.
Second, second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? That's it, folks.
Two.
We have one more.
One more.
No, no, one more. Pardon me. One, bylaw number one five nine eight, first and second readings only, for five four four Winthrop.
Move introduction?
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move second.
Second.
Discussion? Counsel Day?
I just wanted to confirm that the road dedication is still slated to be on the eastern side of the property?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. And therefore, I will be voting in opposition.
Anyone else? Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? We have done in camera, so.
Move adjournment?
Adjournment?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?